Okay, well, welcome everybody to this session. It's really a great pleasure to be able to chair this discussion. The issues related to the impact, the human impact of weapons and the effects of weapons have actually historically been part of the discussion of arms control, really going back at least to the beginning of this century and in fact even further. So the fact that the issues are now receiving once again more attention, not only from a technical community or an expert community but also at a political level, I think adds a new and very interesting dimension to the international discussion. So we're running a little bit late, so what I propose is that we don't spend too much time on the introductions, but we move directly into the presentations. We will follow the same order that is laid out on the programme, which means that first of all I'll give the floor to Alexander and give you the chance to introduce your perspectives.
Thank you so much Ian, it's a great pleasure for me to be here, be invited to speak at this session and I'm glad that humanitarian disarmament approach is included in the agenda. And as Jenny was saying this morning, this is of course a sort of difficult issue for the EU, but where should we have an open discussion about this if not in the context of the consortium conference? These are my personal comments, so not the Austrian Foreign Ministry speaking. And I'm supposed to keep the comments short, so I will speak exclusively about the humanitarian impact and initiative with respect to nuclear weapons and the international process that has developed over the past few years. Briefly talk about the context and the relevance and then about the upcoming Vienna Conference on the humanitarian consequences of nuclear weapons. And as Ian has said, this is of course not a new approach and even all the treaties we have, going back to the Partial Testment Treaty, to the NPT preamble, the biological weapons, chemical weapons, CTBT, then a number of conventional weapons have a very strong humanitarian underpinning. And arguably with respect to the nuclear instruments, the prevention of humanitarian disaster is actually the underlying motivation of the entire regime. So it's been there for a while, but in the last few years it's gained more prominence and I always refer back to the Prague Speech of President Obama as the sort of kickstart. After several years of sort of more of a dire atmosphere in the multilateral disarmament discussions, he sort of re-energized the debate with the Prague Speech with a clear perspective of a world without nuclear weapons and he included some clear references on humanitarian consequences. Then in 2010 it was the ICRC that refocused on this issue, of course they had been involved in this issue for a long time, but then President Kellnberger made a very important speech in Geneva and as the ICRC, as the key humanitarian organisation and guardian of IHL, of course had a lot of clout and an important role to play in this discussion. And subsequently the 2010 NPT Review Conference then included in the part of the conference document that was adopted by consensus, a clear reference expressing deep concern about the humanitarian consequences. And following this, which a number of states, NPT member states and civil society took as a sort of mandate, if you wish, to refocus on this issue, a number of international developments took place, starting with in 2012 a cross-regional group of statements of countries agreeing on a cross-regional statement focusing on the humanitarian consequences. The group of 16 countries in 2012 had grown by the First Committee General Assembly last year to 125 and an additional 18 countries submitted a sort of alternative humanitarian statement, but in the course of just a few years, well over 140 countries felt compelled one way or another to express themselves in the disarmament fora on the humanitarian consequences of nuclear weapons. And then of course the two international conferences on this issue, specifically devoted to this issue in Norway in 2013 and then last February in Mexico and Austria is hosting a third conference on 8 and 9 December. So this approach to addressing nuclear weapons I think is now very firmly established on the agenda and it will not disappear from the discussions in the various fora that we have when we talk about nuclear weapons. But why this focus now, what's the reason for it? I think it takes place against the background of a serious credibility deficit of actual disarmament processes, which may be epitomised by the Conference on Disarmament but not only. I think a large number of countries at least would agree that the frameworks that we have are in a serious strain or in serious trouble. And as nuclear weapons possessing states continue to insist on nuclear weapons for their own security and defend nuclear deterrence theory, the humanitarian focus is sort of counter this with an alternative narrative focusing on consequences and risks. And this is driven at least certainly in the part of Austria but on the part of, I think, everybody else, by a deep concern about the overall health of the regime and the conviction that the proliferation of nuclear weapons is not only caused by those countries that we refer to as countries of proliferation concern, but by the possession of nuclear weapons itself and by the continued insistence on value of nuclear weapons. Looking at the consequences, there is a lot of interesting new research and new focus, lots of papers are being produced and combined with a focus on risks, there is a sort of notion that security provided by nuclear weapons may simply just be an illusion. Because if something goes wrong, the consequences and an extremely broad range of immediate and long-term consequences would be terrible and significantly greater than we have been led to believe or were aware of before. Similarly that the risks, and there we talk about the whole collection of risk drivers ranging from human factor negligence, miscalculation, to technical errors, to risks that are simply inherent in complex technological systems, that these risks can also not be completely eliminated, that they are there and they are also greater and more considerable than we previously understood. So the combination of arguments and the findings about these consequences and risks is put against the notion of security value of nuclear weapons, which at least in the view of a growing number of states ought to change the equation about nuclear weapons. And of course this discourse also goes to the core of some profound moral issues and the question whether the permanent threat inadverted or adverted of potentially ending life as we know it is compatible with a 21st century approach to security, to international cooperation and an understanding of interconnectedness. So this humanitarian discourse takes the issue away from merely a security discussion, which of course is important, but it adds to it, it adds to the sort of limited security discussion among a select group of countries, a broad discussion that is open, that takes place in a multitude of fora and with a much broader variety of stakeholders. And then in addition, this discourse actually reinforces the taboo against nuclear weapons. It's a discourse that has high value in my view, not only in generating momentum for the urgency of nuclear weapons, but at the same time it strengthens the non-proliferation principle. It underscores the argument that reason demands collective action to move away from nuclear weapons, if you look at consequences and risks, reason demands this and that the gamble with the future of all humankind is just simply too dangerous. So we think this should clearly be a uniting issue. And these are among the points why Austria is heavily invested into this discourse and is promoting the humanitarian approach and this is why we chose to come forward to organise the next conference on 8 and 9 of December. Yesterday the information on the draft programme and registration came online. Registration is open as of yesterday, today the invitations have gone out to states and relevant international organisations. And we hope for a broad participation, we will continue with consultations in Geneva and in New York and we remain open for dialogue because we of course need, we understand the need to be transparent about the plans for the conference. So far we're very pleased with the extremely positive responses from states, civil society and also media and we think it's of crucial importance a few months prior to the NPT Review Conference. We wish to pull together the discussions and findings about the humanitarian dimension and take it to the NPT with a lot of momentum and push for progress. Nuclear weapons states' participation is an issue that I'm always asked. In my view, I think it was a grave political error to stay away from this discussion so far, sending the signal that the legitimate concerns of non-nuclear weapons states are not heard and I think there is a need to change this somewhat dismissive attitude and engage more. And I'm pleased that this also seems to be happening to some extent among nuclear weapons states and some of them are engaged to, in an effort to find sort of constructive ways to engage on the humanitarian issue and I think this is very welcome. We're engaged within a dialogue with all nuclear weapons states on this. I think it's also a credibility issue for the EU. I think it's important that the EU is capable to express itself credibly and substantively on all relevant developments in the disarmament, arms control and non-proliferation agenda. And vis a vis the humanitarian discourse and initiative, this has been complicated and achieved only to a limited degree and we hope that we can make significant progress on this aspect in the months to come, also specifically with respect to the NPT Review Conference. Let me close, I'm still in time, I hope I close by saying that Austria is strongly committed to strengthening the global regime and we have a solid track record, I believe, of supporting essentially all initiatives with respect to disarmament and non-proliferation and we're strongly committed to the NPT. And we see the humanitarian initiative as a key element to reinforce this regime and to enhance its credibility. And current developments, and I think we all of course share the grave concern about what's going on in Europe or in the immediate neighbourhood in the Middle East or further afield, current developments in our view should only reinforce the importance of such an approach and we look forward to welcoming broad participation in Vienna in December and I think I stop here and answer then other questions later. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you for a very good introduction. Within this non-proliferation consortium, the various members have different lead roles in certain specific areas. And for CIPRI, one of the areas where we have a lead role is in publications. So we produce policy papers inviting experts and we try to cover a broad spectrum of issues, including this one. So I'm very happy to say, one of the speakers here, Marianne, is someone who has kindly agreed to contribute to this publication series on exactly this topic, so we're looking forward to your remarks now, but you should also know that there will be a written document coming in due course. So, Marianne.
Thank you. Good afternoon ladies and gentlemen. It's my great pleasure to be speaking here today on the issue of the humanitarian initiative and nuclear arms control. I will be addressing some of the points raised in the paper that Ian very kindly mentioned, written by Dr Jenny Nielsen, my colleague and myself, for this topic. I also stress that these are private views which do not necessarily reflect any particular country's position on this issue, but is rather an independent analysis of the humanitarian initiative. I'll be speaking about this initiative generally before moving on to consider how various EU states have responded and engaged with this issue to date and what this might mean for its future. First, I'd like to note the significance of this humanitarian initiative. While for decades we have known about the humanitarian implications of nuclear weapons, not least because of the efforts of various civil society actors, the fact that this issue has now gained such widespread support from such a large group of states and in such a rapid way, as Ambassador Commander has just mentioned, this is very much a new development, that there are states who are supporting this rather than, or not simply NGOs trying to drive this agenda. This is something that, as Alexander mentioned, from a statement by 16 states, we now have 125 plus states who are very much in agreement and wish to take this movement forwards. So there are a number of reasons for this initiative, some of them Alexander has already mentioned. Importantly, I think, we now have an increased knowledge of the scientific, environmental, agricultural impacts of the use of even a very, very small percentage of the existing nuclear arsenals. Numerous studies have come out in the past few years looking at the likely effects, climate effects, effects for food security etc, as well as immediate death tolls of less than 1% of the world's nuclear arsenals and this makes very sobering reading. There's also now I think a sense that the debate needs to involve a wider group of states than occurred during the Cold War and also that public involvement is now seen as essential. And I'll note here, Kenneth Benedict I think has been at the forefront of writing about the need for democratic input into our common nuclear futures. She notes that of course, from 1945 onwards, there has been limited public input and oversight of this issue and there's very much a sense now that we need to have a more democratic process of debate and involvement by small, middle-sized states as well as by the large powers and of course incorporating civil society actors. Also crucial I think is the growth of emphasis on international humanitarian law. Now, IHL is certainly not new, but I think it's fair to say that it lay dormant for many decades. And in fact, this is something that really has not been applied to nuclear weapons, unlike so many other weapon systems. Nuclear weapons have managed to remain in what I call a humanitarian free zone. They've always been seen as separate, special, too hard, closely related to security and yet I think it's inevitable that by now we actually have this kind of framework being applied to the nuclear issue, so no longer is it going to be a humanitarian free zone. And of course there are grave concerns. There is the indiscriminate nature of nuclear weapons in terms of casualties, there is the disproportionality inherent in their use, the infliction of superfluous injury and unnecessary suffering, all of this goes back to fundamental tenets of international humanitarian law. There are also issues of environmental security, food security, intergenerational justice, it's a big range of issues that have really not been addressed significantly until the last few years. And I think that this application of IHL to nuclear weapons was going to happen sooner or later. And indeed I was very pleased to see that the agenda for the Austrian Conference in December is going to focus on this big picture issue and looking at how law can complement the various positions that are taken. Now having said all that, I do not want to suggest that this new humanitarian initiative is unproblematic or that it will necessarily proceed easily. There are some, I think, considerable challenges which will have to be addressed. These include: there are significant variations in the views held by the number of states supporting the initiative, in terms of what the goal should be, of what the pace of change should be etc. Second, many states argue that the humanitarian initiative process cannot or should not go forward without due attention being paid to strategic considerations. And in this sense, it's important to recognise that many states still see value in nuclear deterrence, in extended nuclear deterrence, even though I personally do not believe that nuclear deterrence should be given as much credit for keeping the peace as it has been in the past, or that it is an appropriate framework for current and future international security politics. Nevertheless, there is still very much an entrenched view that nuclear deterrence is something we must keep. And I think therefore that there needs to be a lot of work done, there is some already, but I think we need to be working more on what might replace nuclear deterrence, how might conventional deterrence be something that is developed etc. And then third, a big challenge, I think there's concern that unless the nuclear weapons states engage with the humanitarian initiative, that it will be meaningless. And the nuclear weapons states have shown so far that they believe that the initiative is a distraction from the step-by-step process which they clearly prefer. Just moving on to a very, very quick overview of the EU states. The EU has of course generally shown a common position on the need for non-proliferation and disarmament, but there are substantial differences among member states. In terms of the EU states who have been involved in the humanitarian initiative to date, we have divided them up broadly into three groupings. The first of what we call the drivers of disarmament and clearly Austria, Ireland etc are in the forefront here. Then there is a large number of states, what we call the cautious supporters of the initiative. And then of course there are the two EU nuclear weapons states. Now how the positions between these sort of nuanced groupings, how this coalesces and works out over the next few years, I think will be very, very interesting and very important. It appears that the largest group, that the cautious supporters, are anxious about where this initiative is heading. Many do not want to see too fast a move to ban nuclear weapons, if this is indeed a goal of the initiative, and are mindful of alliance relations. It's not clear therefore how strong and united an EU position regarding the humanitarian initiative is likely to be and what this might mean for furthering the project of disarmament. I'd like to conclude with some personal observations if I may. They reflect my view that the humanitarian initiative is on balance a very useful and welcome addition to the array of activities and processes necessary for moving to a world without nuclear weapons. First, I note that the humanitarian initiative provides a useful platform for all states, the P5 nuclear weapons states, the non-nuclear weapons states and importantly, the non-NPT nuclear weapons states. India and Pakistan for example have attended both of the conferences to date. So it is very much a new arena, it is in fact more inclusive than the NPT precisely because it does allow for non-NPT nuclear weapons state involvement. Second, and Alexander also made this point, the initiative has applicability to both disarmament and non-proliferation. It's a normative position which can help us to drive the non-proliferation norm and to continue to stigmatise the acquisition of nuclear weapons as weapons of mass destruction, weapons which are contrary to the ideals of civilised behaviour. Third, I believe that a diversity of views on the humanitarian initiative is not necessarily a bad thing. It can help to spark new and creative thinking about ways forward to disarmament. But while we can encourage diversity, it is also of course possible that the differences between states will be substantial and if so, what is likely to happen? Will it matter if the nuclear weapons states are not on board with the initiative? My view is that this need not affect the humanitarian initiative greatly. I would suggest that the initiative should not be seen as a threat to the nuclear weapons states or to the cautious supporters of the initiative. It can be seen as another layer in the effort towards a nuclear weapons free world in the same way that we see numerous layers in the non-proliferation project, the PSI, 1540 Resolution, export controls etc. Above all, the initiative seeks to provide what is currently lacking in the international sphere, a strong international recognition that nuclear weapons are contrary to international law and to norms of humanitarianism. This exists, as we know, for chemical weapons, biological weapons and as the Director General of the OPCW noted this morning, having a treaty in place provided the basis for action in Syria. In other words, with an established law in place, it became much easier to make a case for delegitimising the actions of those using chemical weapons. The activities generated by the humanitarian initiative are not explicitly aimed at a nuclear weapons treaty, they are however affirming of a strong humanitarian norm and will constitute a legal recognition of the unacceptability of nuclear weapons. This is something that I believe the nuclear weapons states can adhere to, but they need not do so immediately if they wish not to. At the very least however, I believe it is important for the nuclear weapons states to show some commitment to engage with this initiative and to express their attention to attend the Vienna Conference. Not to do so will only exacerbate the existing divisions between the nuclear weapons states and the non-nuclear weapons states and is bound to have negative consequences for the NPT RevCon in May next year. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you, Marianne. Now before we open the floor, I'd like to give the floor to Hannah Bryce. Hannah is working on a different issue, not related to nuclear weapons, but one which I think is extremely interesting, at least it was for me and I was very happy that it was possible for her to participate in this panel. She's working essentially on trying to understand, and of course she'll explain this much better than I can, the impact of improvised explosive devices, which are now ubiquitous in many conflict locations around the world. But as far as I could see when I did a very shallow attempt to dig up information on this, the issue is mainly discussed in the context of force protection. So we have people who have taken a strong interest in the issue because they want to reduce the threat of IEDs to armed forces in the field. But I couldn't find very much information or discussion of the wider impact of IEDs. Do they have special characteristics which make them more or less dangerous to civilian populations? Can we quantify the impact that they're having? So it was really very, very interesting to find someone who's thinking about these issues and trying to fill this gap. So with that, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Yeah. So yes, as Ian says, I'm here to introduce a topic of the humanitarian impact of improvised explosive devices, IEDs. I'm going to have a specific focus on the impact that they're having on the humanitarian sector. For those of you who don't know me, I manage the International Security Department at Chatham House, but prior to this, in my previous life, I was managing demining programmes in Sudan, South Sudan and Vietnam. So I have a very personal interest in explosive weapons and what they do. IEDs rest as a subsidiary issue within the broader framework of IEDs rest as a subsidiary issue within the broader framework of explosive weapons, and Chatham House, with the NGO Action on Armed Violence, AAV, has started a project to consider some of the more specific impacts that IEDs have on the humanitarian sector. To give you some statistics, courtesy of AAV, in 2013, IEDs were responsible for 71%. That's 27,000 total casualties from explosive weapons worldwide. Of those, 85%, so 23,000, were reported to be civilians. Throughout all countries in conflict, IEDs were the predominant explosive weapon type used by non-state armed groups. The increasing prevalence of IEDs in conflict and post-conflict settings is changing the approach of the humanitarian sector's response to interventions. Whilst the use of landmines and unexploded ordnance have impacted on the humanitarian sector for many years as an indirect impact of the legacy of conflict, the proliferation of IEDs as a weapon of conflict and their targeted deployment has forced the humanitarian sector to change their approach to security management, and consequently, the response provided in conflict settings. The purpose of my talk, then, is to introduce some of the general issues around IEDs and some of the more specific impacts on the humanitarian sector. So to start at the beginning, what is an IED? By its very essence, as an improvised device, it is exceptionally difficult to define what an IED is. However, a common definition of an IED that is often applied is a device placed or fabricated in an improvised manner incorporating destructive, lethal, noxious, pyrotechnic, or incendiary chemicals, and designed to destroy, incapacitate, harass, or distract. It may incorporate military stores, but is normally devised from non-military components. IEDs can be delivered through a number of mechanisms. They can be airborne, vehicle-borne, waterborne, or personborne, which we may think of as a suicide bomber. They can be used to destroy vehicles, including armored vehicles, aircraft, infrastructure, and, of course, people. They can be activated by time-controlled, command-controlled, or victim-activated mechanisms. The wide variety and almost endless innovation that can generate IEDs makes the subsequent threat correspondingly diverse and almost limitless in its extent. It is also the case that improved technology and information can be shared quickly and easily between disparate groups that use IEDs, meaning that the effective approaches to creating IEDs can be quickly disseminated. This makes the impact of IEDs particularly complex and difficult to mitigate against. For the international community generally and the humanitarian sector specifically, IEDs present a particularly challenging operational environment to manage. This includes physically, but also politically, legally, and ethically. Physically, the dangers of IEDs are somewhat obvious and abundant, given the high casualty figures. There can be no one approach to removing IEDs, as there is no one IED. The physical threat is therefore a consistent evolving feature in the impact that they present. The way IEDs tend to function is to spread fragmentation over a large geographical area. This means that a very wide area is often impacted at the point of detonation, heightening the risk of collateral damage, much more so than other forms of violence, such as small arms fire. Often, the effects of the blast go far beyond their intended targets, and this impacts on civilians, but also on NGOs. IEDs obviously require technical expertise to be safely diffused and removed. This expertise is found in the military and in specialized counter-IED teams, but it's a skill set that's very difficult to access, so it's another difficulty for the humanitarian sector to overcome. IEDs also significantly impact access for humanitarian organizations. The most recent report from Humanitarian Outcomes on Aid Worker Security notes that over a decade's worth of data indicates that ambushes and IED attacks on a road have consistently outnumbered other forms of violence against aid workers. For NGOs, the preferred means to manage this threat is to avoid using those roads until they can be assessed as safe again. This, politically, can cause problems for NGOs, as if they cannot deliver aid and services to certain areas, they may be perceived as biased. Legally, whilst the use of IEDs fall within general legislature governing international humanitarian law, such as the Hague Convention and Geneva Convention, there is not strong specific legislation governing the production, use, and application of IEDs, as there is with cluster munitions, say. Some IEDs, victim-activated anti-personnel IEDs, are included under the Mine Ban Treaty, and the Convention on Certain Conventional Weapons, amended Protocol II prohibits the use of IEDs where there is a concentration of civilians. But this legislation is not very far-reaching, and given the casualty figures, not very effective. Ethically, IEDs present a specific concern to those working in humanitarian response with regards to the duty of care to their employees. The level of insecurity generated by IEDs has complicated decisions regarding deployment of staff to regions where IEDs are being used. Operational management is much more complicated than where, say, for example, landmines or UXO are being used. With landmines, you have a pattern of use and systematic disposal, you can provide minor education to your staff. With IEDs, this is not the case. For humanitarian workers operating in these environments, then, improved security guidelines could assist in mitigating against the impact of IEDs. This would likely include an emphasis on building close relationships with the communities in countries where you're working. Other short-term measures that could be taken to mitigate against the impact of IEDs include better stockpile management of abandoned ordnance and military stores. This is a way of preventing easily adaptable raw materials for IEDs from getting into the wrong hands. But in the long term, these measures alone won't prevent the proliferation of IEDs. The wide range of materials that can be used to create an IED and the easy availability of the technology and information required makes IEDs an enduring threat and part of a bigger problem. As I mentioned before, that bigger problem includes the general use of explosive weapons in populated areas. The current conflict in Gaza and the ongoing conflict in Syria have vividly illustrated once more the very devastating consequences their use can have. The use of IEDs in populated areas has been shown to be steadily increasing, with 62% of IED attacks in 2013 taking place in populated areas, as opposed to 51% in 2011. Rules to restrain the use of explosive weapons in populated areas would signify an important step in recognizing the high civilian casualty rates that the use of explosive weapons has, including the use of IEDs. With IEDs being explosive weapon of choice for non-state armed groups, there are further challenges for the international community related to engaging with these groups. Chatham House, AAV, and other civil society actors are well-placed to facilitate and develop innovative processes outside of traditional disarmament fora for these groups to participate in. With a recorded 60,000 deaths and injuries from IEDs since 2011, and over 80% of those casualties being civilians, IEDs can be understood as a very real daily threat for those living and working in conflict-affected environments. Managing this threat and subsequent impact is possible to some degree, but significantly reducing the threat will take much more decisive commitments from the international community. In particular, it is important to move the debate around IEDs away from one of terrorism and insurgency, and recognize the humanitarian impacts that these attacks can have. Broadening the community of actors engaged in these efforts is an important first step. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Hannah. So with that, the floor is open for questions and comments addressed to the panelists. Maybe I could start just by asking a question, really, which comes out of the observation from meetings that I've participated in the last several years, where issues of nuclear weapons have been discussed, that there's a change in the nature of the discourse, so that you have participants at meetings who essentially talk about nuclear weapons as if they are conventional weapons that make a very large bang. And there's a lack of understanding about the features of nuclear weapons which make them special, even though we have such a huge amount of technical data from the tests which were carried out during the Cold War by the superpowers in the public domain. So my question would be really to the people who are working on this: do you see the information that's available being distributed in ways that are easy to digest and assimilate in different communities around the world? Or is it still the case that the technical aspects are largely discussed in expert groups, which is a fairly closed community? What can be done actually to spread the information about what nuclear weapons actually do and what a nuclear weapon actually is? Please.
Paul. Paul Schultz.
Yes.
From Birmingham and King's. I've been very interested in this question. I've attended a couple of meetings and tried to find out what the impact of the initiative is intended to be. What would be success? The nuclear weapons states are said to be terrified that it's just an excuse to move quickly to a time-bound convention, delegitimizing and banning nuclear weapons. And I'm told it's not that. It's open. It's something less than that, but still effective. So I'm genuinely curious about what it would do. I can see it might have one impact, which seems to me potentially perverse, that it would increase the inhibition on enlightened states about threatening and still less using nuclear weapons, but have little impact on North Korea or other states, and maybe Yeltsin's Russia, which is making more rhetorical use of its nuclear arsenal. So I can see a perverse consequence. I'm sorry. Yeah. Yeah, I'm tired and I'm old. I'm obviously older than I thought. The other impact, and this is the link with the IED point, isn't there a problematic aspect to humanitarian disarmament of any kind? We've seen it in the landmines treaty. A small, virtuous group of nations binds itself not to do bad things, to give up anti-personnel landmines. And then we note that they have become the signature weapon, which has led probably to major strategic success for the Taliban in Afghanistan. So clearly, it has no great demonstration effect. And one way of responding to the question of how to manage it is to treat it as a war crime and focus, which might be the general point about humanitarian disarmament, not to focus on the weapons types, but on illegal use, to effectively go after, investigate, and prosecute people who commit war crimes. And that, I suggest, may be the most effective way of dealing with this otherwise impossible problem for groups which simply don't care. It, of course, has problems if you then want to do subsequent peace negotiations, but that dilemma between justice and peace is one which we're familiar with anyway. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Paul. I mean, actually, there's a huge amount already wrapped into what you've said, which would require response, but I suggest we take two or three questions before turning back to the panel. Actually, next on the list was Daryl.
Thank you. Name your this panelist, Daryl Kimball, Arms Control Association. Very useful overview from Marianne and Alexander about where we stand. Just one historical note: the concept of citizen activist organizations, advocacy organizations focusing on the impacts of nuclear weapons is not new. This is just the most recent wave. So if you look at the social history of this, this goes back to the 1950s, and Physicians for Social Responsibility and the Japanese Peace Movement. Anyway, small side note, but important to remember. My question is for Ambassador Kement, which is: with the 2015 NPT Review Conference coming up, how do you see the added emphasis on humanitarian impacts shaping that conversation and perhaps leading to some new ideas, proposals for adoption in a final conference document?
Can we take one more question in the front?
Very stand for United Kingdom. My question was, very similar to the first part of Paul's question, which is, you know, how do we get to that point of the world without nuclear weapons, when it's the difficult guys who are going to be the least likely to sign up to any kind of ban or even acknowledge the consequences? That seems to me a sort of completely unknown step beyond that, and how do we get there?
Okay. I suggest we take responses to those questions, and then we'll take a second round, so we don't lose the... Alexander, would you like to begin?
I thought I would be on the hot seat here, so... Thanks a lot for the questions. To respond to Paul Schultz's questions, and, well, maybe to respond to the sort of package of questions, I think it's a mistake to believe that the humanitarian initiative will bring nuclear disarmament. That's clear. It's also clear to everybody that nuclear weapons states or states possessing nuclear weapons will have to take the decision to get rid of these weapons. So this is a contribution, and I think it can be a very important contribution. So in terms of where is it leading, that is a completely open question. I think what unites, what unites those who drive this agenda is the understanding that we need to refocus the debate on the impact, on the consequences, on the risks, in order to facilitate a change of how the nuclear weapons equation is looked upon. I think that's what unites the countries and actors. If you look at, I'm always asked the sort of political process question, I think it's absolutely clear to everybody, first of all, everybody agrees that the NPT needs to be complemented. The NPT is the only treaty that contains a legal obligation for nuclear disarmament, but everybody agrees that additional legal measures are required. So the CDBT is one, the FMCT is one, there is a proposal on a nuclear weapons convention, there is a proposal on a prohibition treaty. But if you look at what states are saying, there is a broad range of views, but the fact that we need to do something else, that, I think, is undisputed. So the humanitarian discussion can serve as a tool to create the sense of urgency that we need to do that, and it can, yeah, it can create political momentum for political decisions to be taken. But it's not the humanitarian discourse as such, it's another discussion, I think, yeah? So it's extremely important that we create, I mean, from our point of view, that we create the political, that we create the substantive discussion that looks upon nuclear weapons in a different manner or in a complementary manner, and that it helps to create the political momentum for these actions. That's the first thing. It's absolutely true, this is a discussion that resonates more in democratic, open societies than in closed ones, that's absolutely clear. But I think we should never give up on the notion of discussion, of engaging. So everybody's invited, and if the discussion takes hold, I don't think it's ruled out that it may permit also to more difficult countries, yeah? So I think it's too much to expect that this discussion will immediately convince everybody. That's just not true, but you have to start. I think it's, that's what's happening. And it's much more difficult to engage North Korea, that's absolutely clear, but we have to start, and I don't think that this is at all an argument that sort of devalues it. On the, I agree, of course, entirely, this is not new at all. The context is new as it was compared to the Cold War. Maybe we are in a changing political context that may become even more complicated, but it's, so it's wrong to say that this is a new initiative. It's taking it up again in today's context. With respect to the NPT, it's clear that, and that was also the reason why Austria came forward to choose to host this conference at that particular time, because it's clear that the next opportunity where the international community will then focus on these issues, once every five years, everybody is focused on nuclear issues, so it will be an opportunity at the NPT to bring this forward. It's anybody's guess how these negotiations are going to go, but what... It's anybody's guess how these negotiations are going to go, but what we hope to achieve is that a very large number of countries unites behind the humanitarian imperative. How this then will play out at the NPT, I don't know, but we have something to build on. There are concrete disarmament actions that have been agreed upon. This is a way to increase the political momentum for concrete progress, and I think that's as far as I can go, because I don't know what's going to happen in Vienna, and I don't know what's going to happen at the NPT. But it's about creating political momentum, which we hopefully can translate into something meaningful at the NPT. Thanks.
Okay, I'm not sure, Marianne, would you like to introduce?
I would, yeah. Daryl, thank you for your comment. I'm sorry if I did not make it clear enough that, in fact, I certainly acknowledge all the work done by civil society groups. I think I mentioned it, but perhaps not clearly enough. I think what is new about this initiative is, as Alexandra said, you know, there's always been concern, but what is different, the real novelty lies in the fact that now states are banding together and are making these kinds of statements and debates in a very public and explicit way, right? So that large grouping of states saying, "We don't really think that nuclear weapons are a good idea" because of these enormous humanitarian consequences. So that, I think, is the novelty, and then the speed at which it's happening. You know, the question, "Well, the bad guys aren't going to sign up to something like that," that's absolutely true, but I think that's true of any other arms control treaty that you might want to name. The very fact that we have North Korea, Israel, Egypt not signing up to the chemical weapons convention, does that mean we should not have had a chemical weapons treaty? Clearly not. As far as I see it, this humanitarian initiative is wanting to set some kind of standard, make it very public, and have an international commitment to the fact that any use of nuclear weapons would be catastrophic and inhumane. It doesn't necessarily require every state to sign up to it, but if you like, it raises the bar. It will make states, we hope, think twice. And I think it's really not correct to think, "Well, you know, if so-and-so doesn't sign it, we shouldn't go ahead, or we shouldn't support this initiative." This is the case with almost all arms control treaties and other human rights treaties.
My point was going to be the same. I mean, it's true of all laws that some people break them, right? That's the point of having laws, is that you set a framework and a moral framework to work within, and it's true, it's very true in international law, but it's much harder to enforce when it's broken, which is a difficulty. So I think, and actually, I wrote down that point when Marianne was speaking, that setting clear international norms that states are expected to abide by is really important. I think there is a difficulty with non-state actors and how we engage with them, and I don't think we're doing that very well at the moment, and that's something we need to look at, how we can engage with them effectively, because obviously, they're not parties to the laws that are made.
Yes, of course.
I just wanted to add the point that was made on the mine-bend treaty in Afghanistan, and of course, it's the terrible fact that non-state actors use anti-personal mines, but I don't think this is at all an argument that in any way takes away value from the normative force that this treaty has set. And if you look at the, I mean, of course, it's not perfect, and I think it's a big mistake to always look for perfection as the benchmark, but it has significantly changed states' behavior in many countries, and it has significantly reduced the number of people dying or being maimed by it. So I don't see that this in any way distracts from the value of trying to create a standard for what's right and wrong behavior.
There was a question at the back. Yep.
I had the chance to grow up in Peru in the mid-'80s, and I didn't know the impact of nuclear weapons, but I did know the impact of IEDs. I was, we had it pretty much every other week. My question is to the panel, the issue of nuclear weapons states' engagement in this discussion, what are the ideas on how they should, when we mean engagement, what do we mean? What is the role that they should play in this discussion? Maybe the next meeting or in another meeting that I will join? I just wanted to know some ideas, what is actually, some concrete ideas, what they should, the role that they should play in this discussion? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next was Pavel.
Thank you. Pavel Potvik, Russian Nuclear Forces Project. It's actually, it's good that the question of the P5, the nuclear weapons states, came up, because I would like to get your sense of this notion that actually, the link between humanitarian consequences and nuclear disarmament is actually, is fairly complex. Because if I were any of the P5 states, I would actually come to these humanitarian consequences meeting and would support these, and I would present more evidence of the terrible humanitarian consequences of weapons, but I would make the argument that this is why we have them, to prevent all of this from happening. And I'm, if you think, I mean, the link between the kind of humanitarian consequences and legitimization of certain weapons is a difficult one. It worked with some weapons, but I'm not sure that this will work with nuclear weapons. So what if I'm Russia and I'm coming to your meeting in Vienna and saying, "Well, yeah, sure, we totally support you, but this is why we keep them?" So what would be your answer?
Can we take one more question in this round, and then we'll take a third round. We will have time for a third round of questions.
Thank you. My name is Nob Akayama, Hitotsu Bush University, Tokyo. Actually, I was in Hiroshima last week, and there are voices from Hiroshima expecting more from the sort of Austrian, you know, hosting the conference in December. My question is, you know, we have been discussing the humanitarian impacts and consequences last two occasions at the conferences, so that seems that we have, there is a rising awareness of the impact. So what would be the next agenda, you know, rather than just simply talking about the impact or consequences? One possibility, which I maybe would like to know if there is any discussion going on, but who should be liable for the damage, humanitarian impact, like environment, in particular for the third parties? You know, when Fukushima nuclear accident happened, I know we are so much concerned about the environmental damages, not only on Japan or surrounding environment, but the third countries. And in case of a nuclear accident, there is a nuclear liability conventions. But in case of nuclear war, I wonder if there is any kind of legal framework to compensate the damage of the environmental, you know, the damages or humanitarian impacts, who are not really the party to the conflicts? I'm just curious, is there any discussion of that? And also, second question is Ambassador Kement. So you are talking about the issue of humanitarian issues, kind of something to unite the world, but what would be the issue which could divide in terms of this, in the context of discussion on the humanitarian aspect? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Shall we go the other way around and see if you want to respond to any aspects? No? Okay, Marianne.
Yes, okay. What role should nuclear weapons play in the humanitarian initiative if we are asking them to be engaged? I think this is a very organic process. There isn't, you know, a set format and a clear direction of where this is going, and that's not a bad thing. The conferences that have been held and the statements that are coming forward are sort of derived over a period of time based on the various reports and discussions that are being held. So I don't think there's any one answer to what the nuclear weapons states should do, but I think there are two things here. The first is that if they were to engage, it would be a sign of good faith. It would go a long way towards diffusing some of the inevitable tension that will arise next year, 2015. The second thing, though, is that they have a lot of technical expertise, they have a lot of information that they could share on things like emergency responses, provision of care, et cetera. So, you know, there are many, many ways in which they could participate, including by actually sharing some sort of technical expertise and information that they may have. But again, I stress that it's hard to say they should be doing X, Y, and Z, because the process isn't really working like that. Pavel, yep. That's occurred to me as well, that the nuclear weapons states will say, "These are so dreadful that we've got to keep them to deter anybody from using them." But, you know, this really goes back to the deterrence question, and I think that we have to just go beyond that. We have to say that we are about prevention, we are about preventing accidental as well as deliberate use, and no security system is going to be perfect. What we need to do is assess, well, which path is going to offer the best or the better kind of security? Of course, there are flaws inherent in zero-nuclear weapons, but I think on calculation, the weight of opinion suggests that we'd be better off this way rather than maintaining the status quo. At least, I'm fairly persuaded by those arguments.
Thank you. Participation of nuclear weapons states, I think, would be important because they have these weapons. India and Pakistan have participated in the two previous meetings. I don't think there was at all finger-pointing or aggressive atmosphere. I think it was a very constructive discussion. I think it would be the same if NPT nuclear weapons states would choose to engage. I agree that they certainly have a number of expertise on some of the issues that non-nuclear weapons states don't have. They may have played through some scenarios in emergency response and so on in a different way than non-nuclear weapons states have. I think it's, I think it would be considered as a sign of, as a positive sign vis-à-vis the NPT review conference, and a sign of also a commitment to Article Six and the implementation of the various disarmament commitments that we have, including the action plan. Of course, it's the sort of perverse logic that the greater the humanitarian consequences, the greater the professed nuclear deterrence value, yeah? But, so if nuclear weapons states would come to these meetings and make this point, I would say, "Fine, nuclear deterrence, of course, is an extremely attractive concept. So you threaten unacceptable consequences, and thereby wars are never going to happen." But how sure, how much can you really assure all of us that these consequences are not going to happen, that these risks that we are talking about are not going to materialize? And then I think it's, then I think it would be a serious dialogue, and I think that is an obligation, in a way, from those states that have these weapons, that threaten everybody, to explain why we can't be 100% sure that nuclear deterrence will never fail. Because once it fails once, the consequences would be terrible and implicate probably everybody. So then, to the Japanese colleague, I mentioned before that the draft program is out on the agenda. We will, we will build substantively on the work that has been done in the two previous meetings. We will also include a bird's-eye view on international norms and the humanitarian impact of nuclear weapons. So specifically, we want to look at health and environment, and we will also look at international humanitarian law and the humanitarian dimension in existing arms control, disarmament arms control and non-proliferation law, but we don't have specific plans to go into the liability issue. And, yeah, I think, I think I've...
What, do you think that could divide? Do you think that could divide?
Well, I think the concern about preventing humanitarian consequences should absolutely be a uniting element, and I think it's portrayed in a way that this is something that divides us, which I think is not true. What is a division is what is perceived as lack of political will to translate the disarmament obligations that we have. I think that is more dividing than to talk about something that should clearly be in the interest of everybody. Thank you.
Can we take a final round of questions? Ambassador, turn the microphone on the way.
I have a question for Hannah Bryce on IEDs. First of all, the figure you mentioned, if I understand well, 27,000.
Twenty-seven thousand of the total casualties from explosive weapons, about 70%.
Where does this figure come from?
They're from ALAV, the NGM.
Okay, no, but you don't need to answer immediately. Okay. The point is that, I would say, the peculiarity in this case is that these weapons are used fundamentally by non-state armed groups. Is there evidence, first of all, if states also use them, is there some cases in which they have been used by, say, official states? And then what, I mean, what is the objective? Is the idea behind this one of a convention? And then in what framework? Would it be more CCW or, let's say, Ottawa-like process between like-minded countries? Have you given thought to all of this? Thank you.
Ukash Kulas, European Leadership Network. Maybe I'm breaching the open door in here, but it seems to me that there is a clear link between the discussion on the humanitarian consequences and, most specifically, the fact that we'll have an event in December in Vienna and the current crisis around Ukraine and the deterioration of the Russia-West relationship, because we're hearing a lot of discussion about the supposed increased importance of nuclear weapons, about the possibility of de-escalation strikes. So I think it would be a good opportunity to also highlight the consequences of the use, even so-called limited use of nuclear weapons in Europe or in the Atlantic area. And I would very much like to hear your take on this. Thank you.
No, just behind you, Alex. Then you'd be next.
Tom Sauer from Belgium. My question is, how strong are the views of the advocate states? Austria, that's clear, but Switzerland was rather active. Now they have a new minister, and it seems that he is a bit less active, and maybe for Norway, it's the same. And which brings me to a more fundamental question for states like Germany, the Netherlands, Belgium, the so-called cautious supporters. Which societal actors should take the lead in promoting humanitarian approach? Is it the bottom-up or is it the top-down process? I do not believe in massive public manifestations on this issue, and if it's elite-driven, should it be politicians? And if it's elite-driven, should it be politicians or should it be officials?
And Annika was next.
Thank you very much. Annika Thunborg from the Ministry for Foreign Affairs of Sweden. Thank you very much for very interesting presentations and with great respect for the work you do in, in these areas. Just a small comment on the engagement of states or versus civil society. States have always been involved in the humanitarian dimension, not only civil society. Civil society has played an absolutely indispensable role, but states have always been involved since Hiroshima and Nagasaki, since the nuclear testing started with the enormous humanitarian consequences. So every multilateral treaty we have been able to achieve during the Cold War, the PTBT, the CTBT, the NPT, was very much entrenched in the humanitarian dimension, and non-aligned countries were driving that point. That's very important to remember as well. I do agree with, with Alexander that this is not a new issue, but to take it up again in the new context in a post-Cold War, or perhaps, as you said, today changing realities, perhaps in increasingly multipolar world, perhaps as I tend to see it in a globalized world that reminds us perhaps more of a pre-World War One world that we may be heading towards today. And the role of nuclear weapons and the role of nuclear deterrence in that world would be very interesting to discuss. So I encourage you all to work on these issues, to think about that dimension, and perhaps this is something also to be discussed at the, well, I don't know, at the Vienna Conference, I'm sure you have a large agenda there, but in, as part of this debate. Thank you.
And now, now we're accumulating a lot of questions, so we just take two more, and that's really where we have to close the list if we're not going to run over very severely. So Tania, to the other colleagues, I'm sorry, but this is where we close.
I'm Tania Ogilvy-White from the Centre for Nonproliferation Disarmament in Canberra. My comment for Alexander. Your suggestion that the nuclear weapon states could attend a conference and talk about what the humanitarian benefits of nuclear deterrence are. Yeah, you said that, oh, you actually welcomed the idea that nuclear weapon states could attend and then actually put the other side of the argument. Was that not you? Who was it who said that? Oh, I thought that you had sort of welcomed that engagement. I actually do think that would be a dangerous, a dangerous thing to do, to be, to be complete, to be completely honest. I mean, if the nuclear weapon states are going to attend, I don't think that would be a good focus for their engagement. So sorry, I mistook your response to that. Anyway, question for Maryann. A lot of people at the moment are arguing that the humanitarian initiative could actually fizzle, that, you know, focusing on the issue and highlighting humanitarian consequences of nuclear weapons is, is all very good, but over time it could, momentum could be lost. If there were just a handful of sort of realistic goals that you maybe could, that you think the initiative could focus on, on the short, in the short term, that perhaps could, you know, be championed in the NPT review conference, what would they be? Just thinking about, you know, concrete achievements and trying to, to, you know, to promote successes that can lead into a longer term, to create longer-term momentum. Thanks.
Thank you. My question is for Ambassador Kement. My name is Jean-Marc Collet. I'm the PND Director for France. I'm researching the Belgian Pintanks, the group. First, thank you to put the official website in French, maybe it's a sign. Well, so, you know, France wasn't present in Oslo and in Nijliet, criticized a lot of law, criticized a little less Nijliet. And last January, when I organized the, a conference in the CNIT about the humanitarian impact of nuclear weapons, the Ambassador Simon Michel was present and explained for the first times the French positions. And he said, and his conclusions, that these topics, that humanitarian dimension is not the appropriate way to kickstart nuclear disarmament negotiations. And he just said that the third conference on more generally the humanitarian topics will not be the only one solution, but the part of the global solutions, one of the means to achieve the nuclear disarmament. So my question is, do you think that France and maybe the other nuclear weapon state have the same perception of you about these topics and about the result of the conference?
Okay, thank you. So now we turn back to the panel for responses.
Yeah, I addressed the gentleman's first question. In terms of evidence of states using IEDs, I don't, I don't know if there's evidence of it. Anecdotally, I would say yes. I mean, just from working in South Sudan where IEDs aren't a prolific issue. There certainly were improvised explosive devices that were used by the SBLA and government of Sudan forces. I mean, because the definition is so broad, an IED would be, could be two anti-tank mines strapped together, and that's improvised, that's an improvised device. So in that sense, yes. But you are right that the main perpetrators are non-state armed groups. So for me, the legal recourse is not necessarily the right way or the most effective way of dealing with it. But I think setting international guidelines would set norms which, which could then put pressure on, on groups to abide by those norms. I don't think going through a whole process of trying to get legislation in place would be that helpful for this.
Somebody was asking about African support for the initiative and Switzerland. My understanding is that there's very strong support among African states, and Switzerland has been a driver of disarmament and I think will continue to be so. Annika, the point you made about states doing, you know, of course, I think at a rhetorical level, we've seen states saying, yes, we do this. But I think what is really novel about this is that it's, the banner is purely humanitarian and very explicitly so, and for the large number of states. So that, I think, is, is new to, it's different from states signing up to something because, yes, we think it's a good thing. Well, we can discuss that separately, perhaps. Tania, is this likely to fizzle? I, I worry about that, too. How can the momentum be sustained? And what is there that's new that, that can be talked about at subsequent conferences? I think, though, that it is a movement that will continue. I, I actually recently have come to the conclusion that it, it won't fizzle. I think it will be sustained because there is such a strong level of interest in it, even though there is variation among the supports, the states supporting it. What could it achieve? What might be some tangible sort of outcomes? Well, I think the first thing it, it can do, and it is doing, is raising awareness of the consequences, making these reports and analyses more publicly available. You know, there's a range of very, very, very good analysis reports that have come out, not least Patricia Lewis on Too Close for Comfort, the report that came out some weeks ago. So I think, you know, all these sort of could come under the umbrella of the humanitarian initiative. Beyond that, I don't think that the states supporting it are necessarily saying, okay, we want to achieve A, B, C, and D. So I don't think it's for me to say either. But I think that this broader role of raising awareness, making these issues more visible at, at the public level, that's a very important one, that hasn't really been done to the degree that it is now.
Go on, Alexander.
Thank you. Very, very interesting, difficult questions. To the point from Lukasz on, on, of course, the, the situation, the deterioration of East-West relations is, is, is terrible. As I said in my introduction, I think it, it actually reinforces the urgency to look at these issues in a broad sense, with sort of more or less veiled nuclear threats being made. What, what does this actually mean for European countries? Limited nuclear strike is a bit of a funny expression if you look at the consequences. So I think this, this is important, and, and I hope that, that this will also be brought forward, this concern will also be brought forward in Vienna. We will look at, at the number of scenarios and response capabilities and so on. With respect to support of countries of fizzle, I, I don't think that's the case at all. I think the opposite is the case. I think it's clear that, that, as I said, my perception that there is no sort of clear view in terms of process, but there is a clear growing momentum for the importance of focusing on the humanitarian dimension. So that goes, that's in line with what Maryann has said. So in that respect, I don't see at all that is, that the support is weakening. I think it's, it's getting significantly stronger. And also because it, it connects to communities that have for a long time not thought about nuclear weapons, it does make the connection to the human rights community, to the environment community, to the humanitarian community more broadly, and I think that's extremely important. And these are the actors, the broad actors, and the engagement of civil society, which of course will be needed in order to, to make progress. I fully agree with, with, with Annika. I'm, I'm reading the book Sleepwalkers right now, and I always remember the former UN Secretary General talking about sleepwalking into disaster, because if you look at the drivers, the, the capacity of, increasing capacity of countries to pass the threshold, the multitude of actors, how, how, how can we talk about a system of nuclear global stability? It's, the drivers are extremely dangerous, and we may actually be sleepwalking into, into. So in a multipolar world, a strategic, a nuclear deterrence theory that was established in a bipolar world, how can it be applicable in a world with nine nuclear armed states and potentially more in the pipeline? I think these are extremely important issues, and focusing on the consequences, and this is actually very much a risk driver, I think is very topical in that respect. And, and to the, to Jean-Marie, if I understood the, whether nuclear weapons, the take of nuclear weapon states on this initiative, I think what was a mistake on their part is that they've looked at this initiative exclusively as an issue of process. It was, there was, at the beginning at least, no readiness to engage in the substance of what was discussed. It was immediately dismissed as a vehicle to push for a particular diplomatic process. And I think that's a mistake, because the substance that's being discussed is actually extremely strong, extremely powerful. And if this discussion is put forward and the nuclear weapon states are not there, it doesn't make them look very good, because of course they should be in this discussion. So I, I, I think at least some nuclear weapon states are beginning to realize that the exclusive sort of dismissal of this initiative as just a sort of process question is a mistake, and it's important to engage on the substance. And I think this is where we are currently in the discussions that at least I feel I'm, I'm engaged with, with some of the nuclear weapon states. It's not that, it's not that they think it's, or at least some of them think it's, that they've sort of changed the view as regard to process, but I think there is a beginning of change, that there is a need to engage on the substance, and I think that's very good. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you to the, to the panelists, and thank you for, for participating. One of the tasks of this consortium is to promote discussion of emerging issues and to highlight the work of the network partners in, in areas which are extremely important, but not necessarily part of long historical processes. And I think this panel has, has more than met its, its obligations in that regard. So thank you again for coming, and thank you to the panelists, and with that, session is closed.